Pick back up considering that. I have number seven and I'll have a chance to look at. To get that done. What's your pleasure, discussion, comments, or emotions?
Yeah, I make the most of it. That, that's my advice, that's my advice.
Yeah.
That is the thing. So, it's kinda like anything else, they don't, they ain't a good place to stop once you get started, is there?
In my experience, once you start renovating, there is no stopping point.
One, one project leads to at least two more.
Well, nobody like me or Ronnie talking about that, I won't buy it, once we get it like this. It's something to put, come pay on it. Five years or ten years.
Yeah.
It's just cool.
Yeah, we're, we're good, you got any?
Well, even if, but it, now that we don't smoke in the courthouse. Paint job on the last year for eighty dollars, that involves the bill which gets changed in the, in the U.S.
That's true, so, I'll say.
I hate spending money, but at the same time, I, well, we do that.
Well, the, the courthouse is thirty years old, we just need to do a little remodeling and renovating. That's just kinda part of operating. Alright, we'll have a motion in a second, all in favor? I'll get a hold of the committee this afternoon.
If you don't take care of your building, pretty soon you don't have a building.
It'll be like old Zelle.
Yeah, it'll be like the old Zelle.
Yeah, people will tear it down.
You know, I'd like to have one.
Had before it.
I think you used to back up there to the left for him, fall back a bit, a little while.
I have number eight on the security cameras, and that kinda goes back to that extra line put in. And this may, may not be something y'all wanna do, but I talked to Judge Haddaway. And, and Sheriff, they think it's a real good idea if we put cameras in the main courtroom. I had the, the guarding security one put to his end, come in here, they looked at it and, and studied the thing, and they recommend three cameras in there. These cameras is what we're going there if we decide to do that, also has the video, kinda the audio. So, I can get the audio going on in the courtroom.
What does that do when they're conferring? The judge, what does, what does that do when the judge and the attorneys are confering or trying to work out something when they don't want any?
Well, if they're, if they're up at the bench and they, you know, that, the, the audio should not pick up when they're, when they're.
But sometimes, they're at the table.
And if you, at, at Jan's, we can cut these off.
Yeah, because, you know, you need to inform them.
And that's one of the things that Judge Haddaway and I talked about.
Have he ever turned it off in there?
Uh, probably down here.
He'd come down and play.
Yeah.
Because sometimes they're not up at the bench if they, maybe everybody get out.
And I talked to him about it, about a, 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 some way to cut it off, have it there on the bench.
And plus, when you have grand jury in there, you can't, you can't handle it.
Now, is it the front sheet?
Yeah, this is the front one, I'm sorry, this, this is what the.
That's what we spent so far.
This is what we've already spent on that one. That's, that, that's the one, on adding the three cameras into the courtroom. Judge Haddaway, he, he indicated he'd like to see the cameras in there, just for security.
Yeah, I, I think there ought to, that room should have started and might have, you know, put cameras in, I mean, that.
Yeah.
For action.
Yeah. Well, what the, what those, what those security people, they, they looked it over and they, they recommend that one camera go on. Toward the front on the, on the east wall, that will take care of the, the attorney's table, attorney and client's table. The judge's bench, and the jury's lot. And then one camera each on each side, so we're, we're the TV drop facing back. Where, if, everybody, the rest of the room back there, the people that's in there, in the gallery, I guess you'd call it.
If we're gonna do that, we're on screen that live like Court TV.
I'm gonna get to be judged.
Is that three cameras?
Yeah, three cameras. Three cameras with, with the audio. Where's that at? Uh, that, uh. I didn't, my very mistake, where's that at? Uh. Courthouse security, courthouse security, what, what?
Wonder if that was four? That's your, yeah, the one on TV.
This one here.
Okay, this is what's, is it in the kitchen camp? And this is what's going on TV?
Okay, that's what I was gonna say. Word, OT, right there.
We all have, have y'all been satisfied with this book so far, Ron?
So far, I'm, I'm, I'm ready to.
Is that what they said they'd leave?
Uh, yeah.
They know what they said they'd leave?
Yeah.
And it's not what they said it'd leave?
I'm still learning things about it, and every time I learn something new about it, when I get to play with it, I'm, I'm more pleased with it. But these, especially these cameras out here on the front, the way they're situated, you know, I, I thought, it doesn't give me a lot of view. You're just kinda on the sidewalk here and a little bit on the bar, but I figured out that if I pull that thing up, each camera separately. Where it's got the whole screen, and it's got a little box, and I can move that thing around, and this camera that's here on the east side facing west. I can look pretty close to everything going on in the main street there, all the way, nearly to the end of the buildings down there.
Have you got a hangover, or is it there all the time?
No, it's, it's there all the time, but when you, when you put it up on there.
Yeah.
In a, in a box, you got a little box down, and you, you can click on that box, and you move it, and you, and your view moves with it. It's, it's.
So, if it went back, if you had something happen, you went back, you just honed in on that thing?
I can hone in on that thing, yeah. It, it, it's a, it's a neat system.
Can you go back and view things, say, months ago, or?
Up, up to about, uh, about six weeks is what we've got, that's, that's about how, with the activity we have going around here. It's, it's got a minimum of a month, but you said with the activity in here, we should have close to six weeks on that loop. So, see, these cameras, if there's no motion, no activity on them, they're not recorded. They're just, if it's a static view, then that, that loop is not working, only when, when something comes in view of that that picks it up, then it records all of it. So, we said with that, we're probably getting close to six weeks on our loop, so anything that's happened during that time, we can pull it back up. And, and, and download it, if we need to on a disk.
You've got written on your monitor, three more?
Mm-hmm.
We, we put, sent it up to Jen up there, to Jake, and they went to Sam's and bought one of the kits. They ran one after the fuel parts, got somewhere in store too. And a guy stole another guy's car up there, been a month to him now. And, uh, stole it on Friday, filled up his pickup, somebody else's pickup, two, three times over the weekend for it. They kept, where Jen cancelled the car, so, didn't take long, they called, cancelled the car, well, they looked it up, sure enough, they filled up his third time, so. With the security camera, they went back and looked, was it turned out? It was too green, so the sheriff came over and he told me, he said, uh, well, you'll record that, I can send it off to the, uh, crime lab, and they, you know, they'll be able to. With what you got, they'll be able to look the license plate, never tell who stole the fuel. That guy around Jake, that was on the moon. That guy around Jake, you know, fifty. Someone will come in, he lived out there in the country, out there, lived at James G. Gold's house, there and all of his guys moved on it. There's an envelope with the cash for the fuel and the fuel card, man. It's like, oh, good news, proud of the fact.
So, that camera says to pay off.
Just like that, well, it actually paid off, recorded that, because a guy come in there, right behind me, well, then I got a thousand over the diesel, and the guy that come in behind me. How could you put that, uh, he per, anyway, they charged the diesel to him, and we're probably gonna get our money. So, they went, if I got the looking, they heard that it's me, who got the fuel, so I got the bill, so we got a thousand dollars from the diesel, 'cause I paid my bill. So, anyway, we've had it, we've had it for a couple, three months, and so far, it's worked twice. Yeah, and the deck, that, that cash and all could do, that's what he's saying, I don't know. I mean, we got, we got around, we had sheriff apart, and they looked it all over, it didn't hang low.
Well, see, that's, that, these out here in the, in the board, you got the one that's kinda angled toward the, the entry doors, that little door on there. You know, Mike got his, that, that typed up sheet, you know, with his court call on that thing. And you can zoom in, both, those two cameras are different than these others, they are super clear. And you can zoom in on that thing where you can just about read the type on that page. Pretty good camera. But this, it, it amazed me out here on, on these outside.
It's kinda like, uh, go into, give them what they're, that, zoom in on somebody's address and see all up and down the street and move around. Go down the backyard and stuff.
Anyway. Do we wanna expand this with three more cameras in the courtroom? We've got, we, we have the funds in the security account.
I make the motion, get three more cameras for the courtroom.
Okay, ladies, ladies, motion, we have a second. Gary Suggan, all in favor?
Do these other, these others don't have audio, do they?
Alright, the next is pretty straightforward, we got, uh, the, the, that, right, since, uh, bond renewal up, western security, and they've approved. New bond renewal. How can we approve Billy Kirk's?
The other that last week.
Did what? How can we approve Billy Kirk's?
Please, I'm already approved it.
Approved it last week?
Please, please.
Yeah, but here's the thing, we, the, the judge approves commission of law.
I, I, I mean, I just.
Commission's court don't, I mean, I, but I usually bring them up.
Well, I just love his in there too, that's why I just.
He didn't show up the same time around, did he?
Yeah. Yeah, he, he, he has disappeared, and, and it took a while. Uh, matter of fact, we had to get a replacement in.
We don't, we don't like it.
Well, I'll make the motion to approve his bond.
Make, make the motion to approve, uh, Deputy Bradford's renewal, bond renewal, I have a second. You got a second, Kirk, all in favor? And now the, the one with the thorn, Jenny.
Cemetery.
Oh. Hey, here's, should have filed track and plot and deed, that's my cemetery. This thing, as most of you here are better aware of than you even may be, this thing has fallen into our lap, this cemetery, old cemetery. Especially this one out here on the hill. Uh, you know, it used to be a cemetery committee, and it just kinda got dropped on the county. We've got all those little maps and stuff in there, you can't tell one thing about it from those maps. We've got probably at least three times a week on average, we get a call or somebody walking in. Uh, I'd, I'd be interested in, in placing the cemetery, or either that, or my grandmother was buried out there back in nineteen sixty-five. Can you tell me what, what she's in, that sort of thing, we can't tell nobody, basically. We just have to go look. Had a guy come in here two weeks ago. He didn't realize, said they need to go ahead and purchase plots, and they want to get four. One for each of them, and then two extras in case, you know, the kids or grandkids or something, they just. They located two places out there, but one they really wanted. We can't find anything, I mean, it's right up in amongst where some, a lot of old graves are at, we don't know if somebody already has it or not. And of course, it's kinda operated in the past, and there were lots of cases where, where people come in there, they need to bury, bury their loved one, they say, well, go out there and find a place, there's not anybody in it to have. And they just bury them. And we got stuff scattered all over, but right now, best we can tell, there's fifty-seven graves out there, we don't have a clue who's in them. And I do know that there's been at least a couple of instances in the last year, year and a half, when someone got buried in someone else's plot. I would like to straighten that thing out, I kinda give my secretary and, and, and. County Attorney Secretary, the kind of, the, the job of, when you got nothing else, when you get this thing straightened out, they've got, they've been out there with, I've helped them some. We completely remeasured all the blocks, and they're starting to replot it as soon as they get the maps done. TC Card did quite a bit of work here some years ago out there, just writing down who's there. We've got that list, but it's, it's incomplete, and we're gonna take what he put, and we're, we're gonna take that, we're gonna expand on it, and try to fill in. So, we know exactly who's there and what plot they're in, and we're gonna be checking the deeds to see who's got what on file. Here's the thing, if somebody thinks they own a plot out there, and there's not anything in the deed file, according to laws in state of Texas, they don't own anything. And I know it's, it's already been done, it's already been done, well, one group thought they had it, but there's no deeds, no nothing filed, it's been this thing, you know, pick out a spot and mark it, it's yours. And then somebody else, well, it's not really marked, and nobody there, and like I said, somebody else signs it, and they gotta love them, be buried, they can bury them. I'd like to, I'd like to get a system where we know what's there, who has been promised what, or who owns what, and who don't own anything. And then that way, because we have got a tremendous amount of space in, in, in what we consider, I guess, the old part of the cemetery. We don't know if it's spoken for, is it spoken, huh? And then my understanding, that we've not been selling anything except in the extreme door, the end, that new part, because we don't know who owns, who has what yet. What I'd like to do is get this thing marked up. We'll check the deeds, Dorothy's got a book down here that's got all the cemetery deeds that's been recorded in it, get those in file, get that marked, we're gonna start card files on each, each block, each row. Who owns what, we got the deeds. Once we get that cleared, I'd like to run ads in the paper for a couple of months, or three. Asking people that if you think you own a, a plot out there, if you've never registered the deed. Or if you didn't have a deed, but you've got a place, please come in, judge is always, now, let's get this thing on, till we know what's there. But here's the thing, I know for a fact that in the last few years, there's been a lot of folks buried out there, and others that's been promised, okay, you can have these four lots, and they're buried, and these are yours. And that's it. No deed, no nothing, no money change, so, well, I don't know when it was done, but we operated here for a lot of years, where there was a fifty dollar fee per lot. And then, uh, in Commissioner's Court, from August the twenty-fourth, two thousand and nine. Motion made by Commissioner Myers and seconded by Commissioner Hoyt to charge a hundred dollar internment fee in the cemeteries that are deeded, in, in cemeteries that are deeded, Stonewall County. And raise the lot fees from fifty dollars to a hundred dollars for a deeded lot in that cemeterie. And now, now these last hundred dollars.
We abolished that.
Just, just this year. The internment fee, that's when you instituted the internment fee, well, on the March the twenty-sixth, twenty-twelve. Motion by Commissioner Hoyt, seconded by Commissioner Myers to abolish the internment fee. The lot fee of a hundred dollars is still there, it's always been, well, it was fifty dollars up until August oh-nine. We never, it's never been collected. And people said, okay, you got a loved one, and you want to bury there, to bury, we need a system where the funeral homes, when they, someone comes in to bury someone, and they wanna go out there and look. Then they should be sent down here, after we get this map off, and we said, we would like to have this plot. And then we can sell them that plot, collect funds, I mean, it costs us forty thousand dollars a year just for maintenance out there, not counting what Kenny history does. That's just the motor part of it. At least got a little bit of revenue coming in, but it gives us a way to issue the deeds and track who owns what. Cause if it's been, you go, you pick out a spot and, and it's yours, you mark it off, curb it, or whatever you wanna do, and it's yours, we've got places out there, it's curbed off. They don't have a grave in it, we don't know who run the curb, we don't know what to do, there's no deeds for any of it, they're just, somebody just curbed it all. It's like on the north end on that new section, like, the county did that, best I can tell, on all those curbs. Well, we've got, every, every section has at least one cemetery, uh, one grave plot in. And that, there's someone buried in every one of them, does that mean that the family, or about one deal, they claim the whole thing, no? See, that's kinda the way it's operated, it had been allowed to go.
I thought Bobby was gonna straighten, I thought he was gonna, that was the reason he wanted to curb that, was so he could control the plots out there, and those are, should have been.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that's.
Some of it, some of it is.
You not got a copy of that?
Huh?
You don't have a copy of that?
We've got, we've got, we've got a map on that thing, and some of it is marked, and some of it is not.
That new section will have who, who has all those plots, you don't?
No, not all of them. We can't find it, there, and that's.
Could I see it?
Sure. Hey, Holly?
He did say that, the internet, you, you separate from this, uh, to, 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 to. It's such a person. The computer just.
Somebody gave you lots? Somebody gave you plots?
How do you figure out for sure that nobody's buried there, in those places that are curved? Unless, dig a hole.
Dig a hole.
Doesn't George have something that he, that's anything, or is there anything?
There's a horse, old horse, that's flat rock.
Rock sign.
Yeah. The man that worked granddaddy, how many years ago, I don't remember, but, nobody knows.
But anyway, it, you know, we're gonna find all that out, get that all straightened out, who owns what, who has what, and, and, and those, it's, it's got a family member, and they. That's, they're tithing off, they're curving off, and there's a family member there, whether we can find a deed or not, it may or may not, because that's kinda what we're, we grandfather all of them in, there's nothing else we can do to get them. But now going forward, if somebody wants a lot, we need a policy where the funeral director sends them up here, Holly's gonna have all the steps. They, they pay her the fee, she'll go out with a deed on that thing, you know, we'll plot it on our map, and then she's buried out there.
Only thing is, um, if you don't wanna be embalmed, you have to be buried within twenty-four hours. So, if somebody dies on Saturday, they have to be buried on Sunday.
Most of those we get to take that.
Yeah. Well, same as it is, though, I'm usually around, if I'm not around, Holly's around. Some, they, they can get a hold of, but that, that, I don't even know if that's happened here in the last.
It's all, it, it raids pretty rough, but in the old, in the old, uh, records, it reads that there's a place up there for paupers and minorities.
Yeah, that's on the very west end.
We're buried apart.
See, on that, on that.
We have to go with, they.
On that side, that's one of the deals, the north end of that, I mean, fence, and that entire section up there against that fence has been curved off. There's no grave in it, nobody knows.
Nobody knows who.
Nobody knows who.
And then, and there, the old horse, where's grandpa, right there, there's a flat rock there, you, you gotta get the rock.
And, and I.
The old man that worked granddad, years ago, nobody knows, not even.
And, and I suspect there's gonna be some folks, probably gonna get a little upset over this thing for a while, until they figure out that, hey, this is protecting their rights too. We know who has what, who's spoken what, who's been promised what out there, they can come in and tell us. I don't believe people, they come in here and say, we, you know, we got, we got grandmother and granddad buried here, and, and we were told we've got the next eight lots in a, in a ten lot block. Well, I'm gonna believe them, I don't think people are gonna come in here lying to anybody, but they need to come in here so we know. So, sometime in the future, when they go out there and somebody says, I want, I like this spot here, so somewhere in that next eight plots over there on the back corner of it, nobody knows it's theirs, somebody else gets buried in it. Now. Bring up nothing, we have one grave out there. And it's, you know, it's customary in, in, in what you would normally call a, a, a Christian cemetery, plots run east and west. We have one grave, and it's a freshman, runs north and south.
That's the way she wanted it.
That's, cause that's the way.
She appeared.
We need to have some policy if we're gonna control this thing, says, I'm, I know you'd like to have it that way, but I'm sorry, in this cemetery.
Sound good.
Sound good, yeah. And, and by, by it being that way, that takes up about four plots of one grave.
Did she buy four? Well, she bought four, she nipped towards them?
Yeah.
I guess so.
Well, on the diagonal, I suppose, but it's, you know, that's kinda the world we're at.
I'm, I'm, I'm just asking, I think.
Yeah, bought four, and seven, nineteen seventy-four for forty dollars.
Yeah.
Then it ended up, he bought eight in nineteen eighty for two hundred.
Yeah.
Who did that?
Did.
Well, see, that's.
Down the road, now, say he's buried now.
Well, see, I think it's, I think, again, we're worried, and that section's there, but I think it was fifteen blocks and a half, or six, I think, or early or seven. It was still fifty dollars, it had six, six, seven. But the Commissioner's Court raised that for a hundred dollars. And, and, and we need to do that, we need to get those in here, and that's, all that hundred dollars is gonna do is kinda pay for, file, making the deed up and getting fined. And it's not like the county's gonna make you money off of it, but at the same time.
Should be straight.
Kinda keep the thing straight.
Perks, I mean, have an order and keep it straight up there.
And, and right now, there's absolutely no order.
Everything there right now, grandfather's, you keep, you're like.
Yeah, and, and, and here's the thing, if we get this one straightened out, and get that system up and working good, and people understand it, I wouldn't be opposed to us, then, then go to double mountain. Go in, Jenny, lady, some of the, you know, the bigger cemeteries, it's, for some of the smaller cemeteries around here, that basically just families that end up in them anyway, they can take care of it. But these, the, the bigger public cemeteries in the county, we need to have some.
Those mine over there, Jan's, we put on sale. Since there's hot sales, be like people in those years. Yeah, we got room down there now. Yeah, we got room down there now. They have five plots.
But anyway, I, I get hold of. Y'all want this, what was ordered by the Commissioner's Court in August the twenty fourth, two thousand and nine, y'all want that enforced, cause it's not been being up to now. About that hundred dollars for a plot.
Yeah. We, that's the reason we forced the plot down.
Yeah.
That's right, and we were losing money at fifty dollars. That could be a couple what cost for the company.
Right. And, and see, that's, it, it's not that we really need to take any real action, put this on here so I can inform you all and then we can, if y'all wanted some action or something, but. I'd like, I'd like the court's permission for us to move on with this thing and get it remounted and get it, everything plotted in some sort of order out there so we know what we got. It's, and but there, now, there's gonna be some, I'm gonna tell you right now, there's gonna be a few of those graves that we probably will never know.
Yeah.
It's there. But it's best we can, we can determine it and.
Wouldn't be really nice, Ronnie, it'd be nice, be nice. Uh, if, if those girls could get that done and figure out if there's no computer.
Yeah.
So that you know, if you live in Mesa, Arizona, you want to see where your grand, your great daddy was buried at, at my cemetery, you could actually pull it up on the internet and go, right there, where's plot? I mean, I think that.
Yeah, I, I, I'd like, I'd like to get it.
I mean, I know we're all up in this buried out there. We're on the west side.
Well, that's first life, I'm telling you.
It's been broke. Oh, bearing up the west side.
But here's, here's the thing, if we don't get this figured out where we can, I mean, like I say, we've got a lot of space down there in the old part of it. If we don't get it figured out where we know who has what and what's still open. We're gonna be o, having to go out there and do some grubbing and cleaning and opening up that north section for too much longer.
That's just what I was fixing to say. We need to get it figured out because the day's coming.
Yes.
You're gonna have to map the rest of that out and get it figured out where you, what you're gonna do with that oven.
Right.
And I would hire a wrecking wind, you don't gonna put up any headstones. We're all, we're gonna be flat and no curve in that new section.
I kinda agree with that.
That way you can just mow over.
Mow over it, keep it clean and it might even, I don't know, but might have two rows with a eight foot spacing before we put the next two rows so the backhoe can get in. Yeah, right now, for backhoe to get in most of these places, they're running over graves in order to get back there to dig the next grave.
I've always had it in my mind and I don't know if you can do it or not, but I, I wanted to go down to, to, uh. I thought about Snyder, cause I got that golf course blast, and I know that's a long way from the golf course out there. But you know, somebody could just map. You could, no, you take total map of it to a school somewhere and that, to a college.
Yeah.
Where they could map that thing out with the contour of the land and the whole deal, you don't have the lay and fall in there. You know, they have to hire somebody. But somehow that oughta be, somebody's got a program somewhere that you can do that.
Yeah.
And then, then we already have it all mapped out digitally, computerized, set out there. And Joe Blow come in and say, hey, I will be buried right there.
Well, and, and see, we've got rows out there where you can look down, of course, everything's like this, it's like a snake crawl. But you, I, I see what's an obvious row of, of headstones here. And an obvious head, row of headstones here. And then every once in a while, right in the middle. A grave. Just right, I mean, that actually is foot half of this plot and a head half of that next plot. I mean, right in the center. I mean, it's just, there has been absolutely, if you've never just went out there and, and I, and I'm, I'll be honest with you. I've never just gone out there and really looked at that thing until we got, trying to do this the other day out there. My word was yes. It's just, I mean, you got graves scattered in every conceivable manner you can think of. And then you'll have, you'll have right out in the middle of it, of course, a lot of the older ones got, rather than seeming curves, they got broad armpits. And they angled them. But I guess what, I guess basically what we're gonna put this on here is I'd just like to get y'all's wisdom from me to leave these rows out there working and let's get this thing straightened up, cause it is a mess. And I, and I hate for someone to call here and ask for information about their loved one that's buried in our cemetery and I've got to say, I'm sorry, but I don't.
Like really? That cemetery's your deal. I mean. That's what the deed says, it goes to county village. So.
I hear you.
I, I wouldn't run you out over a whole act for what you said.
So out of number ten, there's, there's no action necessary.
We just gonna stick with what we got or a hundred dollars?
A hundred dollars. I, I think that's, I think, I mean, that, that will cover any, the, the expenses. We're not gonna make enough out of it to pay for the maintenance that's gone, I mean, we're forty dollars, forty thousand dollars a year basically, that's for all, all of the county or thereabouts. At least this will kinda, I, I, I think at least there's some little fee that people need to come pay for a little bit of fee so we can get the deeds and get it registered and, and, but I, I, I'd like to instruct the funeral home down here from now on, when someone comes in. They send the rep, a family representative down here so we can chart it and deed it so we know what's there and who owns what. Unless, unless y'all think there's, there's some action necessary on it to tell people. That's more of a discussion thing to kinda get y'all, bounce my ideas off of and see what y'all. Okay. Moving on to number eleven, open four. Here.
Hey, Keith, what about my, little water cross, the little four and I think.
Gonna have more.
Man.
If I get back over here, I think that's about that.
Hey, I think I'm gonna start the crop part. Anyway, I didn't know, cause I know I told you, put your bypass in that thing or whatever, so I was like, I didn't know what to do on that, so.
If I select today, if everybody cow, wolf, pig today, and you get out of that lot, you suffer, you usually have to fix them.
Yeah.
You can be building a bypass tomorrow. That work? That's all I got.
Dude? I got a letter, uh, this is Friday from Danny Benson, legation department. He's requesting, and I didn't have time to put it on agenda, but I don't think it need be, in, in that resolution that Ronnie's our signature man and more, go ahead and turn back hundred and two thousand, eight hundred for fiscal year.
Oh, okay.
Two thousand.
Well, you know, we talked to him about that.
Yeah.
And we need to, I guess, factor the shame and let him sign that part in and then you fill yours in there.
Let me have the permit. Okay. Hey, I was gonna ask you, who did you make this out here, I'm, I don't know, was your, uh, how did you?
Then Todd. What was he doing? He's a, um, engineer tech, he's a engineering consultant, um.
He's one, is he one that hired?
No, they ain't hired anybody yet. There's gonna be several cons, engineering firms. What they do, they get an engineering firm and that engineering firm, uh, goes, does all the contracting stuff. So, and they oversee, you know, we, we use our assumption that techs got engineers to be up here.
That's what, that's what, huh?
But they don't, they hire, they hire these consultants and they, the consultants do all the harm, different contractors, whatever.
So is the consultant's fee, is it not in that fee then?
Yeah.
In that?
Yeah.
In that grant?
Yeah.
I mean, no. Okay.
He, he probably was a little early from going out, but, cause they hadn't put down any of this yet though yet. He, there's a place, and I haven't been able to find it, where they put, uh, projected ramps and stuff like, you know, for later on. Ain't been able to find it yet, but, but he did, he, he did a lot and, and there'll be more probably that they may not look at, they may not need to look at.
Did he father or did he drop?
No, he drove, he lived at town. He was in, he was only way from running, he was in a monitor.
Same engineer firm, I mean, twenty more of our.
Unless, unless y'all wanna take action on that thing, if they've brought up this, is that, that annual turn back from the funds we've not, not used up in grant funds on airport. Turn that back to state because they're gonna turn around and give us a whole lot more than that back.
Way more than.
So I'll just, I'll get this signed.
We keep money for three years.
I'll get this signed, get trace signature on it, we'll get you something back. Anything that, girl? Hey? And? Well, as usual, I got, I got a few things.
Ronnie, if you're just, uh, if you can contact Teddy and let me know what to do, let me just stretch the fine on places.
I, I, I called him first thing this afternoon.
Just not much you can do.
He told me, he said, no, and I told him, uh, you know, I called him back, you know, and I gave him the fir, the wrong week. I called him back and said, I was mistaken, it's not the twentieth, but it, it starts the thirteenth. He said, not a problem. And I told him I'd call him this afternoon and let him know what Mr. Court, he said he should be with us. Uh. Last time, uh, we talked to you a little bit about that House Bill nine fifty eight, where we're gonna be trying to change our guaranteed interest rate on a retirement fund from seventy five. Uh, there's been so much pushback on that. Representative Moore has rethought his position, the bill had gone to the committee and it will not come out of committee. That was, uh. Uh, I've got a few more of the bills I just want you to be a point of, so we know what's going on. Got House Bill eight twenty seven. And that's kind of a big, yeah, I think, of it for us, or could it. And that, that bill will allow the counties to contract with DPS to provide the driver's license service.
They think they'll get that pulled off?
They may do it, I don't know. And, and, and see, the way they first, the way that bill was first written. It was written to put it in the, uh, uh, tax assessor collector's office. Well, the Tax Assessors Collector Association was ballistic over that. And, and, and it, and it was, it was a real poorly written bill to start with, but, uh, it's gone to committee, they've had some hearings and committee has rewritten, basically. And, and they, they now is, they don't have any designated office, that's be left, if, and it, and it's a, it's a, uh, not a mandatory thing. That's the county's option, if you want to enter in that contract with DPS. Also, the committee left it to the Commissioner's Court to decide which department that it would be put in.
What authority is it gonna give the county?
Pardon me?
What authority is it gonna give the county?
To, to provide driver's license service.
Renewals.
Yeah.
Application.
Yeah.
The way I understood it, of course, I didn't realize they taken out the tax office, used to be going to tax office for a reason, I thought tax office idea was already wasn't put to DPS anyway.
Yeah.
And I assume that's probably what, well, generated that to start out with.
I, I, it, it very well may have been. But see, it, it, it really didn't, it, it left the entire ownerships this thing basically on the county's side. You know, DPS just breathing, well, they finally thought this thing through a little further. They're gonna allow the, the Commissioner's Court to decide what department. It's also in the bill now, it requires DPS to provide all the equipment, internet connection service and the supplies, equipment and all.
Thought you'd come here and, and, uh, application, you, you do your eye test, everything is always here.
And thi, this is for counties, uh, uh, under fifty thousand population. Okay. Uh. I, I like the bill as it stands.
I don't think that's.
Right now, e, except I wish they would address things, even when, right now, the way, the way the, the deal is on that thing, once you reach seventy nine years of age, we have a considerable number of those folks in this county. The person that's, it's administering, there's, or renewing the driver's license, when you're seventy nine, it has a medical.